Seven and fourteen. Took my own horn, but I'm speaking more from the charter commission than a selectman's position. But you're going from a town administrator to a town manager. We're pretty well set right now, but I think we need to add something in there, and Matt's got a game plan on that. But in your selectman's pay is, I feel that we're probably making fair wages here, but nowhere near the communities around us, and nowhere near what your communities has got, no councilman versus selectman. So that selectman's line should go up $2,000 to almost $10,000 to be even even with some of your smaller towns, but do we want to do it all in one year, I guess, is my question.
Well, from my personal perspective, I think, you know, we get five grand a year. The chair gets an extra thousand.
Yeah.
To me, I would, I would address it in next year's upcoming budget rather than trying to manipulate this budget.
Well, the, the only trouble is, I mean, you, how long have you had a $5,000 or a $6,000 budget?
Well, it's back in, back in twenty.
Twenty-two years, twenty-three years?
Back, no, back in twenty-two.
Twenty-two, you get, the only thing you got was what you'd taken away from yourself.
Right.
But there's not been a raise.
But that goes back to two thousand and...
Sixteen, uh...
Yeah.
Fourteen. You took fifteen hundred out of your own budget when you cut the hours down here in the town office for three or four years, but you never jumped it back up until just a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think it was fiscal year, twenty, twenty-two, whatever. I'm, I'm fine the way it is, but...
I am doing.
And I appreciate the sentiment there, but I would also, not this year. We can readdress it in probably the twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Can I just throw one two cents then? I think that I agree with what you're saying, and we talked, I agree with what Dwayne's saying, but I think that given the instructions that Matt gave to all the department heads to keep everything at three percent, it may not be the best time to move on something like this. If it's in next year's budget, yeah, we can vote for it. And I think that maybe, I agree with you, because I think the best way.
And the main reason I'm bringing it up is, is because I said on the charter, and this was looked at to an extent, that selectman versus councilman and holy moly, I mean, some of these councilmen that are out there, they're making, they're making more a month than we are a year, so.
But some, you know, I, I looked at Buckston's town report, those guys all, and I'm not comparing the jobs, but I'm just saying, on paper, they got office hours every week.
They, they, they have assignments, they don't have town manager, but we do.
It's, it's a little different animal, but I don't know what their compensation is, I guess probably in the report, but sometimes it's difficult for me to look at their report. It's not like ours, so I can't figure it out sometimes.
We're, we're not a Hollis either, I mean.
Yeah, Hollis is that too.
Hollis was paying for the hour, and it was twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand.
So, but anyway, I think your best guess.
Yeah, so I'm good with keeping it there, you know, as far as Matt goes, he, his title is going to change, but he still has the same authority that the previous charter had, which was, in essence, the town manager, right? So, and, and he's currently under contract.
I was just going to say he's contracted.
So, my, my suggestion is, is that we, we approve the $633,285.
And I'll move that as you just stated.
Okay. Do I have a second?
You do.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, let's jump to leases and debt service. So we're down about, what, fifty thou, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, so we, we, last year was five fifty-seven and four twenty-four, this year's four twenty-five, seven twenty-two, so.
I make a motion that we accept Department thirteen leases and debt service for the amount of five twenty, five hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay.
Second act. Can we come after?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Insurance benefits, um...
Lot of money, but we gotta pay it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a little bit of a difference here between what the, the town administrator and the finance committee recommends.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, so it's...
And that is a difference for the recreation department, for the administrative assistant or the assistant. In our recommendation column, we did not include that with the budget committee recommending that they, the position go back to full-time, we added the insurance benefits back in.
Okay.
What Dwayne was mentioning earlier, and just to recap, it will be in this section here, in the vacation buyout, we've, we've had about $35,000 budget every year, obviously, as you can see there. Looked at the balance, we have about $12,000 remaining currently today, minus any, so that, that was from any buyouts from vacation time, where they may have left, they've been paying them. Looking at our, our future, we have some folks that will be potentially retiring in the near future. My thought is, is, and I know what, where Dwayne was coming with earlier was, is that if there's a change down the road, or, you know, I got run over, that might be in a line that you could be able to have a few dollars that you can pay from at the end of the, at the end of the year to help offset. My thought would be, as we take that 35,000 remaining balance, like this year's $12,000 today, whatever that balance is coming year-round, we have, we list that as a carry forward, and just add that to the 35,000 for next year.
Yes, I agree.
I was going to say it was twelve, I think, I don't have that report in front of me, but 12,000.
I did check.
Then going back to my comment on the town manager, I'm not saying pay any more money, but if something happens, and we never know what's going to happen, or what's, how is health, or anything is, we can't replace him for what we're paying him. He's doing a heck of a job, so, but we can't replace him with the money that we've got.
Okay, so what do you recommend, Matt?
Yeah.
A million forty thousand.
A million forty thousand fourteen dollars. I'll make a motion that Department fifteen insurance and benefits for the amount of one million forty thousand fourteen dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, uh, town clerk, um, we're down from ninety-seven, two thirty to eighty-five, nine oh...
You've got, you've got a thirty-five in there.
Well, that's, that rolls up to...
Does it go all the way down? It's in, it's in dark ink.
Yeah.
I think there's another one.
Get to the next page.
Isn't that part of the insurance and benefits?
We've, we've jumped, we've got the town clerk in here.
Yeah.
Well, fifteen and thirty-five should be together.
This one right here is, fifty-nine is a separate article altogether.
But that rolls up to...
Goes up to fifteen?
Yes.
Fifteen.
It's property and casualty liability.
This thirty-five is part of fifteen. That's a subcategory of that.
Okay, so it's in there.
So we've got, we're down, eleven thousand dollars.
And this is the new hire this year.
Right. Eighty-five, nine oh five is the town clerk's pay or budget. And somebody wants to make that motion.
Eighty-five, nine oh, ah, you actually want...
Nine oh five?
Eighty-five, nine oh five.
Yep.
Eighty-five, nine oh five, yeah.
Yep.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Um, any discussion?
JB, second round, sorry.
Just one, yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor? Okay. Okay, tax collector, um, fifty-seven, nine oh four is the current budget, fifty-nine, six eighty-seven is the twenty-six budget, um, and I think it's just built into the increase rate.
Motion for fifty-nine, six eighty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Done. Treasurer, um, eighty-four, eight forty-eight was, was last year's budget, eighty-five, eight eight three is the new budget.
Eighty-five, eight eight three is a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. IT department, oh man, this is really good.
Yeah, I don't know. It's called the Robert Hicks Road.
Yeah. One seventy-seven, three thirty-seven was last year's budget, one eight four, one oh eight is the current proposed budget. Budget committee voted on it five to zero.
Motion for eighty-four, one oh eight.
One eighty-four.
One eighty-four, one oh eight?
Yeah.
I'll be the wise guy.
We just saved a hundred thousand dollars.
Hey, you told me to cut stuff down.
Yeah, we just went off air too, by the way.
Motion, motion for a hundred eighty-four, one oh eight.
Second.
And they, the big increase was contractual services, Dave?
Software is up.
Software, yeah.
It's not even there.
Oh, it's not even there.
Just watching the other room, shutting things up.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, indecible budget, buildings, and you said that...
This is the, this is the one that I'm assuming is on the sheet in front of you under Department thirty-five.
Yeah.
It's on the tab too, Laura.
Yeah.
Yeah, so line eighteen, the emergency fund, is the one where we added the fifty, and that will put us back slightly higher than we are now, but we have, that's a carry forward account, and we'll get to see if it hover.
So it's one fifty-one even, one hundred and fifty-one thousand even.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't see the carry forward account, ma'am.
Right.
Twelve thousand three forty-seven. Oh.
Do you hover, hover over?
No, I think it's sixteen three forty-one.
Yep. Traffic lights, I think you were, yeah, that was, sixty, yeah, sixty thousand three forty-one.
That's what we have in today.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, because we're, and we're adding it, so.
Okay. All right, so budget committee approved this five to zero, so it's one fifty-one even, oh, one hundred and fifty-one thousand even.
Motion for one hundred fifty-one thousand.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Chairman, this was notified that we're not, we're not live. Seriously. I don't know, is Dave in the building, or?
He is, he, I don't know what happened, or he went...
I'm over here.
Do you want to, do you want to...
No, I just wondered if he could activate it, or whatever he has to do, but...
Oh, he was here.
Yeah, that's not showing.
Not on.
It's not on, oh, so maybe that's where he is.
Yeah, it could be. Thanks a lot, Dwayne, for being around, didn't it?
You killed the game.
Yeah, it's all right.
He's locked in his office, though.
Pulling his toys out.
We'll show you guys.
A lot of committees with guys picking up toys.
Thank you, Melissa. Melissa's recording that we're live on, online still too.
Oh, online?
That we are?
Yes.
But we're not cable. Not in cable? All right, so, um, tax assessor, um, down twenty-three grand, um, so eighty thousand two fifty... So, eighty thousand two fifty?
I'm sorry. I had to go get Dave, what happened?
Nothing.
We, we, we stopped.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're now on Department forty. So, you have a comment?
The only thing we'd made for a change in here was on line six, the revale site inspections, we are, we're listing that as a carry forward, so that she, because that will not be all completed this year, some will be done, but then we'll use those funds towards next year, whatever the remaining balance will be. So, we didn't want to appropriate more.
So, eighty-two fifty?
Eighty thousand two hundred and fifty.
Why is that a thousand dollars more than...
Because the maps, I had an incorrect number for the mapping.
Okay.
That was a thousand dollars off, so we corrected that at the Budget Committee.
And the Budget Committee, four to zero, vote is four to zero. So, I didn't obtain a motion.
Eighty, eighty thousand two hundred and fifty for the tax assessor.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay? Okay, code enforcement. That would be the next, right?
Yep.
Forty-five. Up a bit from one fourteen, one twenty-nine, so, current year's budget, to one twenty-three, one sixty-two.
And I did include a slight adjustment that was more than three percent on our code enforcement, to align with other communities.
Yep.
One, one twenty-three, one sixty-two, as a vote for the code enforcement.
Okay?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We don't vote on overlay, right?
Right.
Fifty will be next.
Okay, so, fifty is the library. Currently, one fifty-five, four forty-one, going to one sixty-two, or one thirty-two.
So moved. So moved. One sixty-two, one thirty-two.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, so I'll look at one number, one, yes, you do.
Okay.
Most of this is all in labor, right? Pretty close, I mean...
Any discussion?
Do they generate any revenue?
They do, but it's like, minimum, six thousand bucks.
Peanuts, okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Recreation. Whoa. Budget Committee recommended five to four, vote three, three ninety-eight, eight ninety-one. So, current budget. Proposed budget is four forty, eight ninety-two.
And the differences between our recommendation and where the Budget Committee is, is the increase in hours for the current part-time administrative assistant, from sixteen hours back to forty.
Now, when you say sixteen to forty, can you give me the history behind that? Where did it drop down?
So, was it last year?
Adjusted.
Current year. This will be the first year, we, we had worked previous year, previous year to pull from an administrative assistant to work the lobby here, a couple days of the week. And, you know, we were trying to engage her and get her, get her additional training, and she was working the front window. And his, his pitch to us was, is that he needs somebody over there, on a regular basis, to help manage the programs, versus having kids constantly for the afternoon and mornings, for the fun energy or teen camp, or the programs they have. So, we had reduced it this, in the current fiscal year budget in FY twenty-five, his proposal is in FY twenty-six, to replace it back to the full time. Which you already, you started that, obviously, back with the, and the insurance one that you, if you didn't, if you don't like that, then you'd have to go back, you'd have to go back and adjust the insurance. I, I guess at this point, you know, this is only the second, we have one full-time person in rec, he's proposing, based on his revenue, his revenue he is looking at for this coming year, projections, is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand five seventy-five.
Wow.
That's what the projections is, that, that's with an increase for, what was it, twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five per...
Fun energy.
Yeah, for, for the programs.
So, it's pretty much paying for, the fine payment, so...
Well, and those are projections for next year, because we're not there today, current year to date, we're at two hundred and forty, just under two hundred and forty thousand. And these numbers are, what, two twenty, right?
There's a bunch of money coming in.
On that, yes.
Summer program, just before year end, correct?
Yes.
I mean, there'll be a hundred thousand minimum, summer program.
There's some coming in already, but, so this is, what, two twenty-eight, so it's a couple, you know, a couple weeks, so I don't know how much, there's a few thousand in between, but...
My last question is, if we approve this, for the position to go back to forty, is the same person gonna just move up to forty, or do we have to re-post, because it's a full-time position now, or do we just...
I would suspect that, well, I think the individual that's working the shifts already, she's actually working over more than the sixteen hours, because she's pulling from fun energy line as well.
Yeah.
I, I, we got into a little bit with back and forth with Budget Committee, you know, but the program payroll line, we didn't, you know, never got reduced based on our number, so, I think there's certainly, there's a few extra dollars in that line as well.
Okay.
But, so to answer your question, I think it'd be the same person.
Okay. Now, I'll make a motion that we accept the recreation budget, Department fifty-five, for the full amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
No, four hundred and forty-eight, one hundred and ninety-two.
Line fifty-five. Very much. I said, four forty-eight, six sixty-eight, what did I say?
No, four forty-eight, ninety-two.
No.
No. Are you making... I'm going with four forty-eight, six sixty-eight, the department, department recommendation.
Oh, you're going the department recommendation?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, excuse me.
That's right.
That's, that's in excess of what, that's, that's more positions that we, that weren't planned for, that changes that completely.
So, so, the Budget Committee has, has approved four forty, eight ninety-two.
Right.
That is with a full-time position.
And that's with a full-time position.
Which would be where I'd wanna go.
Right.
Is that what you're talking, Gary?
I'm going by the department recommendation, of four forty-eight, six sixty-eight, given the fact that it's almost self-sufficient with the revenues.
Put no, we come up with you.
God, this year, it's four, four forty-eight, ninety-two.
Ninety-two, correct?
Yep.
Can you explain that, maybe?
Boy.
If you can.
In the end of it, Matt was explaining it to my wife, so...
The four forty gives him the coverage that he needed.
Yes.
And, because right now, so, and Gary, and just, I, I see what you're seeing, on the initial column B, the four forty, six six eight.
Mm-hmm.
If you, line five includes the full-time person, he's requesting for the one forty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, today, the, the part-time person is being paid, and if I, if I screw this up in my explanation, let me know.
Okay.
We have a budget line in line five, and then she's also being paid on line six, a portion of it.
Yes.
When we transitioned, we were calculating it, and then what, what column D is showing, with Budget Committee gone in, is where we finally got the numbers, which that, line six is still a bit higher than where it probably needs to be, because her funds won't be coming out of that line anymore.
Mm-hmm.
So, there'll be a sur, essentially a surplus of dollars in there. But that's ultimately what they voted on, but, so the one forty-three includes back to the full time, and the program payroll stays the same.
And an extra person.
And an, there was extra hours in there too.
For an extra person, if he didn't get a full-time.
Right.
So, they need four forty, eight ninety-two?
Correct. That's what, that puts them where he needed to be.
And, and Gary, line two oh one is the heat. And by putting that new furnace in, we should be saving about three gallons of fuel an hour over there, in a new furnace.
That's a good thing.
So, it ain't gonna take long to pay for that, and...
Yeah.
And be money in our pocket, so...
I'll resend my motion for four forty-eight, six sixty-eight.
Okay. So, I didn't obtain a motion for four forty, eight ninety-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. We're now on to the planning board, sixty, right?
Yes.
Budget Committee recommendation was four to oh vote. It's five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which is the same budget line item.
So moved. Fifty-one, fifty?
Yep.
Second.
Fifty-one, fifty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, planning department. Budget Committee voted four to zero. Salary, which is... Includes... The gal from Saco River, I mean...
We have some planning money, that's, it's in that account too, yes.
Right.
This carry forward, and that's Angela.
Okay. So, sixty-four, four thirty-nine is what they need, current budget is sixty-nine, thirty-four.
So moved, sixty-four, four thirty-nine.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion against this. Zoning board of appeals. Twenty-five, fifty is the current budget, twenty-two hundred is the proposed budget. Budget Committee voted four to zero, in favor of the twenty-two hundred. Would you pleasure?
I made that motion for Department sixty-five, in amount of two thousand two hundred dollars.
Yep.
Second.
I get one comment, I don't think it's money enough, but...
Okay.
I mean, we overdraft, we overdraft, we'll take it from somewhere.
Sorry.
I don't, the, the legal fees, it don't take long to get a thousand dollars out of that, but we've got another legal account that...
Right.
In general.
We can, the general, but, and you're also paying the ZBA, in most cases, every applicant, they gotta have two meetings now, so they get paid a stipend, so... Usually, they could do it in one evening, and just come in and sign the paper, and now they have to come back and approve the minutes, and...
And you did adjust those fees for this demand, too?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the motion was for twenty-two hundred. Second. Do we have any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Public Safety Committee. Current budget is one million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand eight oh three. Proposed budget is one million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand six twenty-two. And that takes in, in...
Both fire and EMA's.
Case on, yeah, both fire and EMA's, right? But it handles the lack of per diem fee?
Well, that increases overtime line.
Okay.
Changes overtime line. We have not made any adjustments for a transition from the per diem line.
Yep.
Which is line six. I guess, obviously, if we need to, we need to look at that line, as we move forward, if we need to hire somebody out of that. But, it puts our overtime line based on where our current numbers are, and it increases it to seventy-seven, eight oh two. But that's also for, what, ten, ten positions?
I did do an analysis, I have that someplace, but we didn't figure it into this year's budget, so...
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, about in the last three months of the fiscal year, if we find that we're short, because we've got per diems, or full-time, or what, I don't care what it is, help over there, that we haven't got funded, we can take some money out of that ambulance fund, and transfer that into the department, or this public safety department, to offset that.
I believe, based on the ordinance, you are correct, in an emergency, you were in funding needs, but...
So, I mean, there is some funding there, if we find that we've gotta have some more help, and the numbers keep going up and out.
Okay.
And the only other thing I want to just point out, that it also does include, is the contractual services for dispatch.
Right.
So, dispatch is per capita, has gone up slightly, and there's repeater sites and repeated leases, so eighty-six, seven, sixteen to ninety-two. And I suspect we're gonna see a renewed, next year, a slight jump in that as well.
Okay.
Only because the price of employment is, keeps crawling, I mean, yeah.
And this is just fire and EMS, it's not law enforcement, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, somebody make, wanna make a motion of one million eight thirty-seven, six twenty-two?
Guess I do. For five hundred and seventy, for that amount of one million eight thirty-seven, six twenty-two.
No, second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That takes us down to Department seventy-seven, which is...
I'll make a motion, we accept Department seventy-seven, for sixty-one thousand five hundred. Somebody's hungry.
Something's hungry.
No, just, nothing to talk about, because we have to have it.
Somebody wanna second that?
Yeah.
All those, any discussion?
That's a, that's a foot water in the hydrant.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, all those in favor? Opposed? Roscona Fire Department, Roscona Fire Company.
So moved, eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
I wish we could run the whole department like that.
Okay?
Looking nice on that.
The situation.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Transfer station, health and sanitation. It's up from fifty-seven, one twenty, to nine sixteen, five five two, five to zero. Vote from the Budget Committee.
Biggest changes in here was in tipping fees, it went up with bulky waste, and the...
OBI reserve?
Yeah.
Well, EcoMaine has jumped ten dollars a ton.
That was, that was a motion, and he also increased his EcoMaine's.
Which is, which is roughly three hundred dollars a, a load.
Right.
You know, I mean...
And he generates a lot, a lot of revenue.
Yep.
So...
Well, he's, he's way ahead in revenue this year.
Yeah.
So...
I'll make the motion, we take Department eighty, at the sum of nine hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two. Second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Twenty-five years ago, when we sent them for the million policy, and it's still under.
This year.
I was gonna say, but back then, there was a contract to do the whole...
Yep. Okay, Public Works, one million nine hundred and... Okay, Public Works, one million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand seven thirty-two. Budget Committee recommended five zero vote. Current budget is one nine six five six four seventy-two, so...
And just for everybody to know, this does include the seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar, four hundred and ten dollar, seventy, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar plowing contract.
Okay.
Seven fifty-seven?
Four ten.
So you're, you're, Public Works shy of the, the, uh, plowing and sanding is roughly a million dollars. And that also includes, uh, general maintenance and anything that we don't need, not just the public works buildings.
What do we get for sand and salt revenue?
Revenue, revenue for sand and salt?
No, no, revenue, sorry. Balance.
That would be awesome.
For balance.
Look, sand and salt has one oh two.
So one oh two out of one ninety.
And we're, did he give us an update today, we're, we're empty.
I was gonna say, he's trying to get that down.
Yeah.
He told me the other day that he's trying to get... He doesn't wanna put any more material in that building this year, 'cause he wants to build a...
Do the floors and stuff, right?
Do the floors and the, uh, walls, so he's kinda working it down. If he needs it, he can haul it.
Yep.
You know?
But the last couple storms have really drained us.
Yes, I was gonna say, that last storm was forty-some hours of pointing material, so...
So we're looking for one million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Give it to him, one ninety? One million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
Lot of money.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Everybody wants hot talk before it starts snowing and wants it during the storm.
Okay, we're going down to eighty-seven, which is General Assistance, um, twenty-five thousand two fifty. Twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven is the current budget, so it's up a handful of bucks.
I'll move the win.
Did you realize that the city of Portland consumes eighty percent of the state...
State budget.
Budget?
Mm-hmm. Crazy.
Anyway.
I'll make a motion, we accept Department eighty-seven, General Assistance, and a amount of twenty-five thousand fifty dollars.
Okay.
And, I'll second it, but comment Dennis is...
Yep.
Half of that is in hotel rooms.
Yeah, right.
'Cause when they give you a boat, they gotta have a hotel.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
We're just lucky that we don't have hotels in town.
Right. Okay, uh, Education, we, so we jump into ninety-two, which is the capital improvement program. Um, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand was, um, current year's budget. Three hundred and ninety-two thousand, three thirty-one. Budget Committee recommend five to vote, zero vote. It was, two years ago, it was four oh, four, eight twenty.
And just one more tidbit for you, on line eleven, we have got your article that will be separate before the pumper.
Okay.
And that is...
Oh, yeah.
It shows a zero dollar here because we will not have a payment until July of...
Right.
A year out. Uh, paid, that's in the, that's in the rare years.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we have to close, so we actually have to close on it, so we'll have, it will be in FY twenty-seven.
Okay.
There's a lot of close on it afterwards. But that'll be a full money article. Um, and then you've got several pieces of lea-, uh, some leased equipment in here. There's a reserve building fund, ten thousand dollars, um, to, to build that up. I took some of the bronze suggestions from the auditors. I still don't think the ten thousand is enough, but if we start someplace. There's fifty thousand dollars in equipment for anticipated and unanticipated equipment for plow trucks, sanders, loaders, the equipment that we're gonna need moving forward with Public Works and Plowing.
Okay.
Um, and then there's some paving for transfer station. We're holding off on the library paving for now, but we're gonna have to think about both, I know it's not in here for now, but just so you know, uh, library and fire station parking lots, uh, in the near, very near future.
I got a, a question. It seems like in the last two, three years, we've dumped a ton of money on the middle road. And here we go again with another forty grand for Culver.
That's, uh...
That's seven miles of road, Gary.
Just, was it bad?
Yeah, well, it was, but that's pretty cheap for the Culver because we're actually doing, uh...
I guess I'm not really questioning the Culver, I'm just saying just the ongoing expense for that road.
So they do the base and then, and that's why it's important for us to do our paving programs and stay ahead of it, but we've gotten, well, behind over the years at times, right? I mean, that's...
You're using, you're using your paving money for that section, but it's unbelievable.
It takes a lot of traffic.
Yeah. And we will have, we've used some money from the accounts and, uh, from a couple different CIP accounts for the FEMA storm this past year too, so some of that will be reimbursed, but trying to put some back into those CIP accounts to build the backups we're in position to buy that company.
So looking for...
He's tried to do that in four pieces.
Looking for a motion for three ninety-two, three thirty-one.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
You do.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Were you in favor, Dwayne?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, unclassified. We've got, um, Contract Deputy Services, two deputies, um, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, current budget was two sixty-two. County tax is part of this as well. Looks like, um, we're five twenty-eight, five hundred, and we're going to five forty?
No. So that was an estimate we plugged in, uh, before we got more information and when we met with the Budget Committee. That five forty, uh, is probably close to five seventy-ish, five, it was approximately ten, there, I think about ten percent increase.
Yes.
Uh, overall. So when we met with the Budget Committee, obviously you see the Budget Committee's recommendations, um, I think they are split on line five, uh, at this point. We kept that at two forty. However, we did that thinking that that position has historically come in at closer to two hundred thousand, and because we'd already finished the meetings, we were okay, not knowing where the county tax would be, that we would be okay to...
Yep.
Move that from there to county tax line.
Can we, can we take that, uh, five oh one and make that a separate article altogether?
It is.
It is, okay?
It's a separate article.
Okay, now, can we also make that into two questions? Do you support two deputies? Do you support no deputy? Or do you support one deputy?
So it's a multiple choice?
Yes. Uh, well, uh, uh, two questions. If they vote down the first one of two deputies, would you support one?
But you gotta explain what coverage we're giving. I'd say do away with it.
I think the county is gonna end up giving it to us before they get done. I, I think in that county budget, the, these outside deputies are gonna be gone.
I think you're right.
I, I don't think we're gonna need it, but...
Let's, let's deal with that separately.
But it is a separate article.
Yep.
It is a separate article, but, um, I guess I'm just asking because...
Well, we can have that...
What we're proposing too, but, uh, if the townspeople don't feel we're getting the work, then do you still want one? You know, I don't know. I... The only reason I supported it two years ago was because the townspeople voted to do it, so... Other than that, I was pulled out and had gone before. I think we are getting some more coverage and we're getting better reports, but we're still a long ways from getting what we're paying for.
Well, that's, uh, that's gonna have to be, uh, we, we could add a second question to the...
I guess the second question would be, if question one is defeated, would you support one deputy?
Yeah, well, the county might satisfy this.
Right.
'Cause they're talking about doing...
Doing away with it completely.
Contracts.
Yeah.
But I think that it's prudent to, to at least put the, uh, the two forty in there.
So how would you wanna label question two?
Well, I think that we need to have that discussion.
We can have a couple samples for you, 'cause you'll need to vote on your, the warrant article on April first. So we'll have a couple samples then.
Yep. Okay. So we're looking for eight sixty-four, oh forty-seven.
Yeah, okay.
And that includes all the agencies. Budget Committee recommended five zero vote.
So...
So you're, you're leaving the two forty in there?
Because we might use it for the tax if the tax is higher, right? The county tax?
Right. I mean, the, the, the bottom line is, is that if, if we vote it down today, if something happens, then we're gonna be on the hook, right?
I...
I would prefer that the county deals with it.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I don't wanna be responsible for taking this off.
Right.
And saying, no, we don't want it, I want the people to decide.
That's right.
Yeah.
So just because we authorized it today does not mean it's gonna go through the voters.
That's right.
And we'll leave it up to them, so...
So I'll make a motion for two hundred, uh, yeah, uh, eight hundred and fifty, eight hun- eight fifty, eight three forty-one.
Eight sixty-four, oh forty-seven.
Yeah, eight sixty-four.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll second it. For eight sixty-four, zero four seven.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? You're abstaining?
I'm gonna stand because of the two forty.
Okay, Old Home Days, last...
Fifteen thousand, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Department ninety-seven for the Old Home Day Committee for fifteen thousand dollars.
Seconded. I will say that that's down...
Any discussion?
It, it's down quite a bit, and they're doing a good job keeping the budget down a bit, so...
All those in favor?
Realistically, the fifteen thousand is your budget.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they're doing a good job running their own...
Okay, let's go back to page one. Okay, um, other discussed vote to accept the minutes of the February eighteenth meeting and the March fourth meeting.
So moved.
I can't vote on the February eighteenth.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so, uh...
Separate them.
Yeah.
So...
I'll make a motion to approve the February eighteen minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? You were absent.
Right.
March fourth meeting.
I'll make a motion to, uh, vote to approve the March fourth minutes.
All those in favor? Anyone? All right.
That was a tricky one.
Yeah, had to do it.
Your all set was, you're gonna create a couple of questions?
And then we'll have Deanna here.
Yep.
And we'll have the rest of the ballot of the one or few, uh, since you can sign it for you.
Okay. Anything else? I would...
Are we doing twelve? Pending decisions? Pending, like a pending decision. Zoning Board change?
Oh, yeah, that's within the Planning Board's laps.
Okay, so one...
Yeah, it's pending.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.